Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 16th, 2022 City of Kankakee Planning Board. I will call the meeting to order, and if we could, we have a quorum by calling to roll call, please.
Beverly Hood.
Present.
Chip Roarke.
Present.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Susan Lopez.
Here.
Jessica Andrade.
Here.
Arthur Lacks.
Present.
Dave Robinson.
Present.
Barry McCracken.
Here.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Present.
Thank you.
Definitely have a quorum.
Approval amendments for July 19, 2022. Are there any corrections or comments? Seeing that there are none, we'll go ahead and file them. Communications, Mike?
Lots of them that all revolved around the cases we have tonight, so we'll come back to those.
Okay, City Council actions?
The property at 346 South Fourth that was a duplex, you recommended rezoning it to R2. The City Council agreed and approved that on August 1st. The major variance that was requested for that apartment building at 1260 East Merchant Street, the applicant has appealed. We are giving her a little time to see if she can find some alternative solutions, some closer spots where she can do some parking or something like that. So she has appealed, so it's on record. At some point, it'll go to City Council. If she comes up with a better solution, maybe we'll bring it back to you guys first if she does. But right now, it's in the works, I guess.
Unfinished business?
Nothing.
Okay, we will move into our new business, case number PB 2022-7-1. A public hearing on the request by Steve Anderson for a major variance from single-family residential patio size requirements at 2007 Stonehedge Court. Is the applicant present?
Present.
If you would come forth, please.
Right to microphone.
At the mic, please.
And thanks for bringing a crowd with you tonight. So I need you to swear in. So do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Proceed to explain what you applied for.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Anderson, and I live at 2007 Stonehedge Court. I'm here before you to request a grant for a variance on a patio that I had poured already due to a miscommunication between contractor and myself. I live at the residence with my fiancee Veronica, who's seated over there, and her daughter. We bought the property in October of last year. We had several improvements that we wanted to make. We wanted a shed, a patio, a fence, and a generator. So I knew we were going to have a hard time finding contractors when we moved in, so I started looking for one last year, several actually, and I lined them all up. The patio was the hardest one. Everybody I was calling, they wouldn't even call me back. Finally, I got a guy out of New Lennox, a company out of New Lennox, father-son. I don't know how many of them there was, but they agreed to do it. They came over, we discussed it, I told them what I wanted. I've never lived in Kankakee before, so I didn't know there was any rules as far as limits or anything like that. I just told them the size I wanted, which was 25 by 25 with like five-foot little cutout on each end for flower planters. I have an 18,000, some odd square foot lot, 2,500 square foot house. So it was appropriately sized, I felt, for the lot that I have, and it looks nice. It's stamped concrete. I think you guys probably have photos of my property. I don't know if anybody's came out and seen it. It's very tasteful. We take very good care of our property. We take pride in our property. We try to make it look good. That's why we did all these things. Generator got done, that guy obtained a permit. We didn't discuss all this with all these people, they just automatically did them. The fence, Osterhoff did our fence, they obtained their permit. I got the shed from Panazos, so I knew I had to get a permit there because it's pre-built shed. I did that, and then last came the patio. Guy called me, said we were next up. You ready to get your patio? I said, yeah, we're ready to get our patio. Just go ahead and get it whenever you're ready to do it, you know? I may be there, I may not be there, but go ahead and do it. So he come out, he poured it, and he came back and he sealed it. Didn't really discuss anything. I paid him. Oh, I discussed with his son that they were moving to Tennessee. We were one of their last jobs they were doing here while they were in Illinois. They relocated to Tennessee. So we chit-chatted about that stuff, but then I got a letter from the city. You didn't get a permit for your patio. Oh, shit, okay. I said, sorry, pardon my language. They said, just go down there and get your permit. So I went down there and I filled the sheet out, and I put square footage and everything on there, and they tell me, your patio's too big. What do I do now? So that's when I was put in contact with Mike, and we had to go through the variance procedure, which I'm here before you now with that. But I was not trying to circumvent any rules or anything like that. I merely put a patio in that I wanted. It's a beautiful patio. I don't think it's any issue. I don't feel it's any issue. I think it looks appropriate to my property size. It's just what we wanted. I request that you allow me this variance so that I can keep my patio that I love very much. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions, commissioners? Okay, I'll open it up for a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience for or against this case?
Must step aside, so.
Alderman, please.
We have an alderman that wants to.
We have an alderman.
I'm Alderman Lance Marzek, of the 4th Ward. I've looked at the pictures and just think it's a beautiful patio. Looks appropriate. It's an odd-sized lot there. I don't think it takes up too much of the landscape there, so I haven't heard any opposition against it, so I'd recommend forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any communication?
No specific communication on this one.
Okay. If there's none, then we will go ahead and close the public comment session and defer back to our commissioners. Are you ready to act? Is there a question?
I know I'm ready to act.
Okay.
In case PB 2022-7-1, the request for a major variance at 2007 Stonehedge Court, I would like to make a motion that we approve the request. The findings are as follows. The request does relate to a specific lot that is unique in its size. Number two asks if the property in question can yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations of the zone. I doubt that the house would be of any less value with a smaller patio, but the owner would incur considerable cost in tearing it out, so there's a hardship claim to be made there. Number three, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It will not alter the essential character of the area. And while we do try to protect permeable surface in residential areas to reduce runoff, this request would not contribute substantially to a great loss in permeable surface. The benefits of the variance would substantially outweigh any detriment, and the variance would not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan, which are promoting and protecting the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and general welfare. It would not substantially impair securing adequate natural light, pure air, or safety from fire and other dangers, or conserving the taxable value of land, that actually probably add to it, and generally enhancing the aesthetic values throughout the city. It complies.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? So we have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second. By Barry McCracken. And there are no questions. Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Jessica Andrade.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Your variance is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next case is PB 2022-7-2. We have a public hearing on a request by Fortitude Community Outreach for property at 1256 through 1258 and 1288 South Fourth Avenue. The request is for rezoning of the property from R1 to C1 and a conditional use permit or shelter care facility. As a reminder, the comments will be limited to five minutes. No copying. And if you hear someone who's already made a comment similar to what you're making, if you could refrain from coming up and making the same comment, that would be appreciated. Is the applicant present for this, this case?
Yes.
Would you come forth, please? And anyone who does plan on speaking, if you could please sign the side-up sheet.
Chair? Chip Roarke?
And also, we have a comment by one of our commissioners regarding this case.
I respectfully ask to abstain from this. I'm the architect for the.
Okay, so Chip Roarke is abstaining because he's the architect for Fortitude.
One other point of clarification here, just so everybody's clear. This is actually two public hearings put into one, right? It's a rezoning of the property from residential to commercial, and it's a conditional use permit, assuming that that rezoning happens. It's all related to the same property, so we're going to do the public hearing simultaneously, but when the planning board goes to vote, they will make two separate votes on those particular cases. So anyone in the audience or anywhere else that wants to provide any testimony today, I'm going to swear everybody in at the same time, and when you come up, you can state your name. So if you plan on providing testimony, even if you're not sure, but you might later on, go ahead and raise your hand right now and answer this question. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Proceed.
If you could state your name, please.
I am Jack Tyson. I am a board member for Fortitude Community Outreach. And just spend a second here on sort of the background as to how we got here, real quickly. As you recall, we were moving forward with a building of a permanent new structure on Washington, and we came and got approval on that. With a bit of an agreement on our current location at St. Paul's, we would not use that facility past this last shelter season and build this new facility on Washington. So we proceeded with that, moved ahead with design and all the areas to prepare for the construction, including working on estimates, right? And as we did that, through the first design loop, our original estimate of about $600,000, due to economic conditions and inflation, got wings and went to $1 million. And so we did a couple of things. We went back and did a number of redesigns based principally on reducing footprint and, for instance, reducing the kitchen utility, things of that nature that would have a significant effect. And so we also came before the city, if you may recall this, asking for some help with AARP funds to bridge the gap between our original estimate of about 600K and what was turning out to be very close to $1 million. So through that effort, as we went through those cycles, and our last effort at redesign during that time, the MEP costs accelerated and took away the cost reductions that we had come up with on our footprint and kitchen and the like. So at that point, we had to decide what our next step was to get a permanent shelter and try to get it in time for an upcoming shelter season. So the logic was to look for an existing structure that we might use, that we might find that's appropriate, and therefore, we're here to talk to you about 1284 South Fourth Street. So in that structure, we found, as we examined it with resources.
Jack, one second. Folks in back, if you guys want to grab one of these seats up here, you're welcome to do that, all right? They're completely open to anybody. Sorry.
So we quickly went through the property. It's a solid construction. It hasn't got, hasn't got any significant fundamental issues. Justin Gozlin, PSI, Dan Ruder, Jake Cook from Glady, and help from Chip as well. We went through the facility to see how quickly we could put it into ADA compliant and fire code compliant, et cetera, condition so that we could start a shelter season. And so we have a rough plan and some design elements and that that we're ready to begin detailing and executing to get that accomplished. Now, we also did go trying to find other structures that fit some criteria that we have to make sure that there's, that's accessible by the homeless community through bus, et cetera. There's a large open area for housing of these folks. And in our St. Paul facility, we actually have reached capacity from what we're able to house there. And with given economic conditions, we don't expect that to go lower. We expect that to increase. But just want to make sure I'm covering everything here. So this building will provide us with the safe sheltering. It also gives us the eventual addition of some day programming services, which the City Council discussed with us as a good target for us to pursue, and we definitely want to do that. And we have a signed contract for that purchase of that building with the contingency of the approval of the planning board and the City Council. Now, we tried to, in all of these things, even in our Washington effort, we went about this trying to inform folks as carefully as we could. So I called all of the aldermen, either left messages or got to speak with them. We went door-to-door in the area with Fortitude board members and staff to try and clearly explain because we understand the concerns and to be very fact-based on Fortitude and our guests and what that means to the residents. And we also held a sort of a night at the park thing where we invited everybody to come, and our director gave a good explanation of what we were doing, as well as some characteristic folks of our guests and the things that they've experienced and the challenges that they've experienced that bring them to Fortitude. So that's why we're here. That's our proposal, so that we can move this as forward as quickly as we possibly can and not miss a shelter season. But I will be very clear about this. We don't have a Plan B here. Stepping back, we had an agreement with the city, and we, you know, we honor these things. We had an agreement that we would not continue at St. Paul's. That would be last year. And we have not approached St. Paul's about that. And Bob Bowman, the exec director at the time we pursued St. Paul's, he's here if you have any questions about the experience at St. Paul's. He would be glad to answer those questions. I certainly will try as well, but he might provide an objective view. But we have no fallback here. So I just wanted to make that clear. We went, originally you might review also that we had a pads model or an itinerant model that we started with back four years ago or so. That's not a viable option now due to many things. The amount of guests, the burden of picking up all the stuff you need and moving it to every church every night. And at the same time, the COVID protocols and things of that nature really don't, that doesn't fit how you're moving these things from place to place. It's a very careful thing that is handled at St. Paul's in a very meticulous manner. So that's where we are, and so we're here tonight to ask for that rezoning and approval of the conditional use permit. And if there's any questions, certainly we'd be happy to do our best.
Any questions, commissioners?
Were true in the lower institution?
Yes, yes, yes.
Can you share with us if there have been any reports of any loitering or crime at the St. Paul's location or any of the other sites?
Yeah, none at the other sites. We had an incident that it turned out to be, well, I'll just say it this way. We had one incident at St. Paul's, and certainly, please ask Bob Bowman for any input from him on this. He knows the details. But the good thing is, in St. Paul's, we put in a complete surveillance system. And we got to the basis of that situation, and it was not any kind of, it was a situation that should not have been reported at all. Sort of, it was architected on the part of the people that were involved. So no, we have not had those kinds of things. And sometimes we have, so one of the things we do is very carefully screen people before they're admitted to a Fortitude shelter. If they are sex offenders, they are not allowed in. There's a very constrained time in which they can be there and when they must leave and leave the area. They can't loiter around the facility. And our record of performance at all of the itinerant sites and at St. Paul's, and please ask Bob if you would like, he's here, has been quite good because of the structure and the order, the orders that we follow. We've been very careful about that. And the pads model is something we base that on, which is very successful as a worldwide model in how to do these homeless facilities. But I do want to say one more thing. And I understand it, but it's disturbing. There is a stereotypical view of the homeless. And I would ask that you be very careful to evaluate the truth of the Fortitude guests and where those folks come from. They're disabled, they're veterans, they're moms with kids, they're victims of some domestic abuse situations. They're, they have jobs. We had one fellow, and I can't remember the name, wish I could, but he would leave the shelter in the morning and do all kinds of things to get to his job and then come back. They're just folks who are, who have experienced some very traumatic conditions, some of them longer lasting than others. And our effort is to go with them, meet them where they are, and then bring them back into the community as a contributor and as a self-reliant contributor. That's the objective of Fortitude. Okay, sorry, too many words.
How about hours of operation?
I think it's, now I'm going to, our director should probably answer the details, but I think it is six in the evening to seven in the morning, I think. Now, again, I'm going to say this to be very clear. You know, as we move forward in a permanent shelter site, we do want to get to a point where we can offer services during the day which would accelerate the ability of these folks to get back into a self-reliant condition, self-reliant situation. With our current shelter model, that's a little more difficult to do. And we do, we concentrate on being collaborative with community services. We don't want to duplicate things. We want to offer what we offer very carefully as a core and then work with, in collaborative manner, other community services to try to move things forward for each of these individuals. All right, a lot of words there.
One question.
My name is Dave Robinson. Two questions. On average, how many people do you cater for on a daily basis? And is another shelter in the old Homestead Building, do you all work with them also? Is there a working arrangement with that shelter?
So that shelter is a recovery site. That is different than Fortitude. Now, we try to work with everyone, but that, I just want to be very clear. That is a recovery site. That's not what Fortitude does. Now, at St. Paul's, we had a limitation of 18 folks. And at the end of the shelter season, we were turning folks away as conditions economically, et cetera, were becoming more difficult. Now, you know, we would like to get a capacity of 30 folks. That's what we would like to do. That's our target.
And just to be clear, so the actual capacity is going to be determined by the fire department if you guys approve this thing.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, but what we did, just, just is, one of the ways we look at the facility was, what is the capacity we expect that facility to have? Sorry.
You were, Barry McCracken. You've mentioned to us that you're, you don't have a Plan B.
Right.
Why do you mention that to us?
Oh, it's, well, I have to, I have to say, it's because we are extraordinarily concerned at this point. Our shelter season normally begins in October. And we found, went searching for this alternative existing structure and have found one. And now we've accelerated a plan with Justin Gozlin, PSI, Chip, the electrical folks, the plumbing folks, fire people, to try to get this thing into ADA compliance as quickly as we can, if we get approval, so that we can have a shelter season this year. That's our only alternative.
So you couldn't go back to the pad system?
No, no. There's, as we, as the number of folks began to increase, as Fortitude became more well-known and as, as conditions became what they are, we got more guests. And in a site where you're not moving things around, which by the way, we can't move all the stuff we have around now. There's a lot of stuff there. It was also a way so that the guests can always rely on where they, they need to end up. And I'll give you an example. My church, River Valley Christian Fellowship, was part of the pads sites. And we had a bus stop, not, not right there, but at least walking distance, even if it was a little difficult, but within walking distance. And Metro removed it. Those things happen, and then the guests don't know what to do. And trying to find where we are able to help them becomes more difficult for them. And they don't have these kinds of tools to be able to adjust to this. So one night, I can tell you this, one night, I remember there was a gospel singing at the church, and I'm on the security team at the church, and all of a sudden, two or three ladies went walking by in mid-winter here towards River Valley. Well, it wasn't a shelter night, but they didn't know that. It's difficult for them to do. So quite some time ago now, we knew that we needed a permanent site. So that's not, our objective is clear. That's what we need to do. Anybody else?
Jack, your executive director had emailed me some petitions. We need to get that put into evidence, if she's going to bring it up or somebody else is going to bring it up later. Otherwise, you might want to now, but.
Well, we, yeah, we tried to get as many folks to, to sign in support as we could. And so we do have those. I think she probably gave those to you.
Yeah, she emailed that to me, and I've emailed them to the board.
So we have those available. You know, my, my, my way of doing these kinds of things is to present logic based on the situation and what you're trying to accomplish, not to try to do some, some political element to try to, try to do convincing. I'd like a nice, logical, clear element over objectives that makes sense to anyone who has a conscience in this situation. It should be all that's needed, and I'm just being blunt, so.
Thank you. Don't go too far. I'm going to open up the public hearing session. Donna Sample? Samples.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna Sample, and I am before you this evening to speak very strongly in support of the rezoning and the conditional use permit for Fortitude on South Fourth. I have 25 years of experience in social service, working with homeless, near homeless, people in need, people who are struggling. One thing that these individuals are not, they are not criminals. They're just individuals who have fallen on hard times. And the acronym of NIMBY, not in my backyard, takes over any time someone wants to do something good. in my backyard, takes over any time someone wants to do something good, but it has to be in someone's neighborhood. I would welcome fortitude in my neighborhood, right next door, in my backyard, in my front yard. This is an organization of very high integrity. Dawn Brewers is highly educated, her employees are highly educated in the field of social, social work. I've been at the table with Dawn since she was attending the continuum of care, and this was all just a thought. And Dawn has called me in the evening, text me, anytime off-hours, we have this situation, can you help? And social service providers come. That's the type of relationship with, in Kankakee County that we all have with fortitude. We are here for each other, no one is afraid of the people that we serve. There is absolutely zero data that backs up having a shelter in a community raises crime. They have been in the community with zero data of crime being raised. I want to stay on facts and not on fear. I am here this evening because these are people who need our help. If it's denied, they do not go away. When you meet the basic needs of humans, food, shelter, warmth, and clothing, now you can begin to build upon that person's external needs for work and housing, but those basic needs have to be met first before you can even begin to touch on housing and employment. Fortitude meets those basic needs. I've served personally in working in the shelter and professionally in helping fortitude to serve their guests. While I was on-site, the guests are treated like family. We sit together, we laugh together, it was so much fun, I saw how much love is inside that shelter. This is not a thing where it's dirty and it's criminal, this is a family environment. People get clean clothes, they get to take a shower, they feel so much better about themselves, they have a clean set of clothing to put on, they have a full stomach, now we can sit down and have reciprocal conversation on, who are you and where are you from? Tell me about your family. This is an amazing program. I would not stand before you on this had I not seen it personally and professionally. And one other thing that I want to put to this, we want to worry about crime coming into an area, there's things going on that people are not addressing already, and it's just because it's been there for so long that it's not looked at. There's areas in this community that has crime that doesn't have a shelter. We can't put these together, they don't belong. These are individuals who have maybe lost a job, fallen harder on their luck. It only takes one eviction, and you're homeless. It's not something you go through over and over, you don't get to do this over and over again. One eviction, one fire. I'm working with families who are burnt out, they're all homeless. Doesn't mean they're criminals, they just need some help. This organization is built from top to bottom on integrity and transparency. They deserve an opportunity to show what they're made of on South Fourth. That is the perfect property for not only the shelter, but their expanded programs. Gives them everything that they need to be able to move forward so that there are less homeless people in the city of Kankakee. If we think they're not here, we're mistaken, let's work on getting less. And we can do that by approving this. And I stand on that of twenty-five years of social service experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Liam Wheeler?
Good evening, my name is Liam Wheeler, I am the Director of Homeless Services at PATH Incorporated in Bloomington, Illinois. I also serve as a Central Illinois Continuum of Care Lead, as well as our Homeless Management Information Systems Lead. So, I'm here today to talk about, uh, the role of fortitude within the continuum as a whole. So, it is my responsibility to secure funding and guide and plan the expansion of services in eleven counties in Central Illinois. We have three counties within our continuum that have active services, including McLean County, Vermillion, um, and also, sorry, McLean County, Vermillion, and Kankakee. We do have a small service provider in Logan County, but by and large, um, we do not have a lot of services. So, within the continuum, fortitude has been responsible for taking care of one hundred and seven, unduplicated, that means we, uh, see not how many times you've taken care of one client, but how many clients have we actually taken care of in the past year? So, one hundred and seven people, the year before, it was thirty-three people. Fortitude is responsible for contributing to our coordinated entry system, so, um, with our organization within the continuum, we're responsible for tracking the priority list of unhoused, uh, people in our communities who are at the greatest risk for homelessness. So, they help us to, uh, pour data into that, that data is then, um, tracked in our Homeless Management Information System. This information is highly critical to pouring into our needs assessment for the state, but it also helps us as a whole to gain more funding for our geographical region. So, they have been very, uh, instrumental in doing our HIC and PIT counts, which are point-in-time counts, where we walk the streets of the communities to see how many people are actually living on the streets at any given time. Those usually take place during the winter, in the middle of the night, and they've been instrumental in that over the last couple of years. So, the way that our funding works, uh, most of it comes through HUD, and we are, even though we cover eleven counties, we are considered a very small continuum. Within the five shelters that we had, uh, this last year, we housed two thousand unduplicated numbers. So, in the scope of all of America, that seems very tiny, so we are very dependent on service providers, because the more service providers we have giving a broader range of services, the more money the geographical region as a whole gets. So, um, HUD has set up the continuum of care, so instead of like, just one agency applying for funding, we, um, apply as one geographic whole. That funding is then distributed to those providers based on their needs. So, fortitude participates in the Kankakee Local Hub Meeting, um, but they also contribute to the larger CICO-C meetings that happen bimonthly. If we lose this shelter, we are at risk for losing funding for the continuum as a whole. Um, they have applied and received ESG funding, it is one of the smallest pools of money, but one of the most, um, competitive. Um, they beat out two other service providers, because the continuum as a whole believes in this organization, we believe in what they're doing, we believe in the integrity and their data and how they communicate and participate with us as a whole. Our other grants that we have coming up, we have two for unsheltered and rural homelessness, and then our annual NOFO, which is a Notice of Funding Opportunity, that both of those are coming up in September and October. We have to prove that we are participating with municipalities and hospitals and churches and, you know, policemen and all these different service providers, so that we can receive more funding for the geographical region. If we lose this, we lose one more point of contact in our community, we lose one more point of interaction, and that's hard, because we are underpaid, we are overburdened, and we need every dollar that we can get. The increase in homelessness that we're seeing, the increase at, um, for homeless prevention needs, it's astronomical, like, it is just growing and growing and growing across the continuum, and we have seven counties without services. We need the counties that are strong, who are already bolstered, who are already doing things to expand the services that they have, so that we can get more money to plan, uh, for the activities in those counties that have no services whatsoever. So, for us, it's, it's important not only for the individuals here in Kankakee, but also for the eleven counties that it represents. Does anybody have any questions about how the COC operates? I know it's a lot of information.
Thank you.
Steve Dusak? Hello, my name is Steve Dusak, and I've been a volunteer and a supporter of forty community, forty-two, uh, uh, community outreach for, uh, several years now. Now, the services that we provide the homeless, I think, are extremely important, uh, not only to serve the homeless and, and for all their needs, but how it reflects on our community as a whole. Uh, as companies come to look at Kankakee County, to perhaps locate here, they're gonna notice how we treat our people that have the greatest needs. And the fact that, uh, Dawn Beers and, uh, and, and her organization has provided the op, uh, the opportunities these last few years to serve the homeless, and now have the opportunity for a permanent, uh, opportunity, uh, I would ask that the, uh, Planning Commission approve this, uh, this evening at St. Paul's.
Thank you. Audra Taylor?
My name is Audra Taylor, I live at three sixty-four West Jeffrey Street in Kankakee, and I am going to be the first to speak against the rezoning of fortitude for the church. The gentleman who led the discussion brought up my first point, he said that there is a screening program in place for all people who seek shelter. He mentioned that sexual offenders are not allowed. What about violent criminals? People who have been convicted of pandering, or prostitution, or drugs, or gang violence, domestic violence, you get the idea of the list. I'm sorry, I tried to prepare something written, but my nerves got the better of me, I'm winging it here. There are fifteen hundred and seventy-three students enrolled at Kankakee High School this year. Kankakee High School is eight blocks away from the proposed shelter. Now, the young lady from the district wasn't able to give me an exact number of students, but a conservative estimate is one percent of those children walk to school every single day. In the course of walking to school, they are going to pass the shelter at the time that the residents will be asked to leave for the day. There will be a conflict there, we've seen it many times, anyone who lives in the fourth district can vouch for this. It's not so much that there's anything wrong with the people who have sought shelter, but rather with the attitude of the teenagers. They're going to be defensive, they're going to want to make fun, and parents, of course, are going to try to knock this down, but it's not going to happen one hundred percent. There are going to be vulnerable people exposed when these people are asked to either come in or leave for the day. One block north of the proposed shelter is Option Center for Independent Living, where numerous handicapped individuals are housed and make regular trips down Jeffrey Street to facilities that provide food and goods and sundries and snacks, and wait for the bus to take them to their jobs. We have a right to protect these people as well as the homeless. We're not denying that there is a need for shelter in this city, there is most definitely a need for that. I myself am a lifelong member of St. Paul's Lutheran Church, as Mr. Bowman can testify for you. I one hundred percent stand behind the usage of this facility for these people, and there is room for expansion if they were to be allowed to do so by the city council. Another thing that we have to consider is what this is going to do to the property values. Real estate is an investment, and we expect our investment to grow as opposed to decline. A simple Google search will show you that when homeless are in an area, regardless of whether or not they are problematic, the general public outlook is such that they don't want to be associated with a property, especially one like mine, which is quite literally across the street from this church. If we were to sell, no one would be interested, because they don't want to associate with that shelter. That's a harsh thing to say, but it's also a reality. We need to take into consideration, what is this going to do to our property taxes? Are they going to raise as a result of rezoning? Are they going to be altered in any way? That's something that I, as a taxpayer, have to consider. What type of budget do I need to set for myself to make sure that I pay to the city council, or not the city council, excuse me, to the county, what needs to be paid? I have a slight issue with that. You're hitting me in the pocketbook. That's an issue. We would like a guarantee of some sort. What type of insurance is fortitude required to maintain in order to defend against any potential harm that their guests may do? If they're turned away for the evening and they're left to loiter in the neighborhood because their capacity is at maximum, where are they going to go to? Are they going to go crawl under some bushes? I mean, that sounds horrible, and I know it does, but you, you know full well, when DPW is going around the train tracks and other areas, the cemeteries, cutting tree branches up above six foot so that there is no canopy where the homeless can go and camp out and create their little tent cities, how do we know that's not gonna happen in the neighborhood? I have a doghouse in my backyard, I used to have a Mastiff, now I have a Great Dane. That doghouse will accommodate a human being. I don't want to wake up one morning and let the dog out, and holy crap, there's somebody in the doghouse. It sounds ludicrous, but we've had people jump the fence before, we've had multiple garages in the fourth ward broken into before. People, even today, you see on Facebook, all of the people running up and down the streets, trying to get into cars, causing property damage. How much more is that going to escalate when they have to be turned away from the shelter site? These sound bad, and I know that, but there's no way around the reality of it. I'm not saying that the people that they service are these type of people, but we all know that there are homeless in this community that are those type of people. There's one gentleman named Vince, long blond hair, rides around on a bicycle, sits outside of Meyer every single day. The man is horrifically mentally unstable, and I've seen him riding around our neighborhood.
Ms. Taylor, if you could wrap it up, please.
I just wanted to give you some points to consider. I am a resident against this, I live right across the street, I don't want my property damaged, I don't want my animals hurt, I don't want the high school children hurt, I don't want the handicapped that live in the vicinity hurt. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, no clapping, please. Next, Claire McElroy.
My name is Claire McElroy, uh, I am a supporter of fortitude. A few years back, I worked at one of the PADS centers, and I asked myself each night, how does she do this? How does Dawn do this, going from place to place to make sure that the homeless in our community have a place to rest their heads? And now, what she's trying to do is get a permanent shelter. Dawn, I believe, has followed a call, a call to minister to the less fortunate in our community. And there have been blocks and blocks. I'm not afraid of the homeless, they're not the people I'm afraid of. There are people in Kankakee that I'm afraid of, it is not the homeless. I am here to say, support this effort. I saw lives changed, and many lives have been changed since sheltering and this program has been in operation. So, I ask you, think about the homeless. The homeless will be with us, they will be with us tonight, they will be with us years from now. What we do for them rests in our hearts. What will we do? What will we do? Tonight, as you lay your heads on your pillows, think of those who are laying their heads on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all. My name is Dawn Tutt. I reside at 1745 South Fifth Avenue, Kankakee, 4th Ward, down at the dead end. Been there for 32 years. What I ask of you is I ask of you to think and to look deeply, and I mean listen, to really listen. I listened to the opposition a moment ago when the man she's talking about riding around isn't homeless. The man who has been on my property and broken into my property three times was not homeless. The vagrants that are sheltering in place and selling their drugs in the abandoned and open properties of the 4th Ward, those are the issues. But those people have homes. The homeless are not the criminals here. Fortitude will have a security system that will probably outshine the entire police department, because they had one before, and they'll have it again. I only wish that I lived a little bit closer instead of four blocks away. I wish I lived across the street, and I wish I had enough money to buy everybody's houses around it so that they could occupy this church and its former parsonage. I ask you, what's going to happen to this church and parsonage? Is it going to become another vacant structure in our 4th Ward where more crime takes place? Where more drug dealing goes on? Probably. These aren't the enemies. And any one of us, at any given time, could be homeless in minutes. I won't repeat how, and I won't repeat why, but it's true. There is nothing wrong with having the shelter at this location. Yes, there's a bus stop right there so that individuals can get to work. Most of these individuals do have jobs. Or through the grace of God and the mercy of the staff and the volunteers of Fortitude, they get jobs. They move off of homelessness. They start taking over apartments and homes and become tax-paying, full citizens, but only if we give them a chance, only if we give them that option. This is a perfect location for them. It truly is. It wasn't wanted downtown. That was proven. They were even told they couldn't ask for another permit use. Why not have them in a church? A building that was a church, that will continue to minister to them. I invite every neighbor around there. Come talk to me. I was home-based. You're talking about petitions before. I was home-based when Fortitude's volunteers and staff were out knocking on doors and explaining what they wanted and what they could do, and trying to get people educated about the homeless situation in our city and in our county. They stopped by my place. They picked up their pamphlets, their information, and their petition sheets. And I tell you, the only reason I wasn't out there walking that ward because I'd knocked on every door twice just to make sure was because I had double bypass surgery and lung surgery a couple of months ago, and my good legs won't last that long. But you bet, I was home-based. I own a vacant lot across the street from my house. Wish it was big enough, I'd give it to them so they could build on it. But wait, it's residential. We'd be right back here again. I ask you, please, go down there. If you don't want to vote on this tonight, you don't give a yes, go down there. Go see what is actually going on. Read everything that Dr. Brewer and company have put out. Talk to the individuals that at one time were homeless, who had an opportunity to lay their heads down safely with warmth and a meal, before you say, no. You're not entitled to that. You don't deserve that. Look at yourselves, your families, your children. Would you want someone to step up and help them at their most helpless, desperate time in their lives? People talk about the neighborhood. Come on, we got Silla Houses, we've got Section 8 housing, we've got vacant houses. This is going to be the safest organization you could put in 4th Ward. Main thoroughfare, bus route right there. Kids, yeah, I know all about the high school kids. They cut through my property all the time. Jump over the fence, cut through the cornfield, do damage to the property behind, which is agriculture, agriculture to the south. But not one time has a homeless person ever done any damage in the 4th Ward. Not one time. Only those that live, that have a place to put their heads at night, have ever created a problem for any of us in the 4th Ward. I challenge anyone to prove otherwise, and I respectfully request that since those of us at Fortitude who did get both digital signatures of support and handwritten, hard-labored shoe leather signatures, it was reported that there was an anti-petition, I respectfully request that that be made public for the numbers. Is it a true number, or was it inflated? But please, think about it. There's no reason this organization can't safely do what they need to do to accommodate the homeless in our area and to better it. We might even make the map globally. Let's make this thing a success. A raging, crazy success. To show what one little bitty neighborhood can do. So I ask you to vote your heart. Not just your political affiliation. I ask you to step beyond the norm sometimes of, well, a couple of people are opposed that are in that ward, so they happen to be council members with you. So don't side with them just because. It could be your ward next that will ask for a shelter if we can't have it in 4th. Because we can service this. The city of Kankakee can give Fortitude an opportunity. To literally put some map. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm unable to make out the first name, so I'm going to attempt the last name. You wore it?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, City Councilwoman. My name's Mary Kay Warpitt, and I'm here in support of Fortitude. I live at 1094 South Fourth, which is a block and a half from the shelter. I, the need is great. The need is here. So if you vote this down, these people are going to be on the streets still. So my plea to you is to vote for this. Many people have made their cases. What happens here is that fear comes from misunderstanding. Most people do not understand the face of homelessness. It could have been me 30 years ago, when I lost my job, when I lost my partner, and my unemployment was running out. Had I not had a mom that lived in the area, I would have been looking for a place to sleep. And this is the place that I have gone. So you guys need to think about who you're putting out on the streets, who you're leaving out on the streets. These are not criminals. These are not the people that are going to do bad things to kids going to school. These are people who need a hand up to the least of these, you know? So it's the right thing to do for the city. It's the right thing to do for our neighborhood. It's the right thing to do for humanity. So please, vote for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ally Schannard. This comment is in support of Fortitude Community Outreach having a permanent location in West Kankakee. I've been a paramedic on the ambulance and in the local emergency rooms for the past four years. I have interactions with the homeless daily in my field. Most are not medical emergencies. The ones that are, I can personally see how people in healthcare treat the homeless different. Year-round, we house homeless in the emergency room overnight because they have nowhere to go and they're hungry. This takes away resources from our community who actually need them. Having a permanent location would allow the emergency room and the ambulance services to have a place to refer these individuals who call 911 just to have a place to go for the night. Currently, a rotating shelter is not ideal for the population that Fortitude serves. All of the offices that offer resources to the homeless population currently are in downtown Kankakee. When the shelter was in Bourbon A, we saw a dramatic drop in numbers. At St. Paul's in downtown Kankakee, there was no looting or congregating at this location. Fortitude also housed the homeless students from Kankakee High School this past year. When we sheltered in the 4th Ward previously, because we've been there before, it was a great success, and there were no complaints from the residents whose yards actually touched the location that was in the 4th Ward. The population that Fortitude serves are very respectful of our locations because it's where they can consistently get food, water, and shelter. Those are the only three things in life that you truly can't live without. On top of that, they get friendship, community, resources, and all the other things that your mental health needs. Fortitude's goal isn't to get these individuals off the street for the night. They strive to get them off the streets for life. As a member of the community, working every day as a first responder, I'm asking you to approve this permanent location for Fortitude Community Outreach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Claudia Noe, and I stand before you today to ask for your consideration of the rezoning of the properties from 1256 through 1288 South Fourth Avenue, and the conditional use of this property as a shelter care facility. I'm currently a resident of the 3rd Ward, but grew up in the 4th Ward, having lived there for 23 years. My mother still has a house in the 4th Ward. I'm also a supporter of Fortitude Community Outreach and have been since the summer before their first shelter season. I first became aware of the organization on a Saturday visit to the Kankakee Farmer's Market when I came across a tent that was seeking donations for mattresses for the intended pad shelter. I went home, grabbed my checkbook, and returned to make a donation. I firmly believe that I was blessed enough to have a warm, safe place to lie my head every night, and I felt called to help others to be able to have that same feeling of security, even if just for one night. The next spring, when Fortitude was seeking regular monthly donations for the Transitional Housing Program that they were about to start, I was all in and committed to a monthly donation. Since that time, my husband has gotten involved by committing to participate in street outreach once a month when it's not shelter season, and providing at least one supper meal and one breakfast per month when it is shelter season. There are countless other volunteers in the community who do the same, and even more that volunteer at the shelter, providing companionship, comfort, and fellowship for some of the most vulnerable and often overlooked members of our community. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I did some brief research. The definition of humanity, according to yourdictionary.com, is the entire human race, or the characteristics that belong uniquely to human beings, such as kindness, mercy, and sympathy. That same website defines compassion as the deep awareness of the suffering of another accompanied by the wish to relieve it, and sorrow for the sufferings or trouble of others accompanied by an urge to help. Fortitude Community Outreach is asking today not for any monetary support, but for humanity and compassion, as they seek to help people in our community that are so easy for many of us to just look away from. I urge you to consider allowing Fortitude Community Outreach to continue their mission of kindness and mercy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Larry Enz. I'm a longtime resident of the South Side. I also own a business building at 288 West Jeffrey. And I would just like to thank you for listening to me. I appeared before the City Council at their last meeting, and I had 95 signatures and a petition. I now have 150 signatures and a petition, and mostly these 150 are homeowners in the 4th Ward. I purposely did not go to the rental units, as rental people are in and out. I tried to go to the homeowners themselves. And I will hand you that petition later, if I can have permission to approach later.
Sure.
I just want to give you some information. That neighborhood is very overcrowded right now. On the other end of the block that they want to rezone is a 12-unit building and an 8-unit building, which I feel was probably a mistake from a long time ago, planning board, not none of you, to even have that many units in such a small area. Also, down the street is a pinnacle building. If you know what, does everybody know what the pinnacle is? If you don't, ask me. Also, there's also a drug rehab at the old homestead. It's only two blocks away. I just feel that we're stuffing this all in the corner of the 4th Ward. I have no problem with Fortitude finding a place, but I want to tell you, the location, location, location is wrong. Fortitude themselves say how safe everything is at their Fortitude unit. Well, in investigating a little bit, right now, there is the case in the court of sexual assault in their Fortitude where they're at right now. What else they've hidden, I don't know, but for them to say it's safe, I'm not sure if that's the right words. I know there is a need, but I feel that there's commercial areas that are much better suited for that. One of their criteria when they were going to move to Court Street was they wanted to be close to the different units that can help these people. This is not close to them units. Most of those units, like Duane Dean is downtown, Salvation Army, where they can get free meals is downtown. Aunt Martha's is kind of close. There's a lot of things that are close down there. I have one request to this board, looking on the Fortitude's line that they have on a website. I do notice that one of your board members, they state helped draw plans for Fortitude for this project. I would request that he recuse himself.
He has.
He has. He already has.
Okay. I know he's a good man. I personally know him, but it just would look biased, you know? In closing, the only thing I can tell you, board, is I request that you don't look at, when you make your decision, don't look at the need. Look at the location. It's all about the location. I know they need a place, and I just don't want that need to affect your decision. Thank you very much for your time, and if you'll let me approach, I'll bring you the...
Moses Lindstrom.
Thank you. Did you flip word? Hi, my name's Moses Lindstrom. I'm a current resident of the 4th Ward. I live on 1044 South Fourth Avenue. I guess I was just going to mention that homelessness has many faces, and I myself have experienced homelessness, and I have memories of being a kid and having to stay at the Harbor House. I have memories of the house catching on fire and having to stay in a hotel for three months. You know, those memories could have looked really different if we didn't have those And I have been in a place where I didn't have those options as an adult and had to sleep outside. And I guess I'm just coming from a place of empathy. And I guess I'm just coming from a place of empathy. Homeless people are already here. It's just a matter of giving them a safe place to lay their head at night. You know, if teenagers are walking by and they're bullying and targeting homeless people, who... What is the problem we need focus on? The homeless people or the bullying? You know, do we need to punish the victim or do we need to punish the bully? I mean, it's not about punishment, really, but what's the real problem here? Is it that homeless people exist or that people have a problem with the homeless people? So, I'm in support of the shelter on South Fourth. I think it's a much-needed resource for our community, and that's all I got.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Poole. I live at 444 West Jeffrey. I am very much against this. I have worked all my life to provide for my kids. I was a single mother. I thought, if I buy a house, it's going to appreciate in value. So when I get older and I have to go to a nursing home or something, this house can be sold and I'll have the money to take care of me or to give to my children. Everybody says, when we went to that meeting, it doesn't affect your home, your house value. I know when I was looking for my house, if somebody said, "Oh, by the way, there's a homeless shelter across the street," automatically, that house would not be for me. By zoning it, rezoning it, and letting it go, I feel they're stealing my money for my old age. Also, they keep saying, "Well, we have security," and most of these people have jobs to go to. Not all these people, most of these people. What do they do when they get out at 7:00 till 6:00 in the afternoon, evening? We've all driven downtown and seen people sitting on benches, not having any place to go. I don't want that in my neighborhood. I live by myself. I don't want to be afraid to leave my house, that someone's going to break into it. I don't want to be afraid for my personal well-being. I just feel we have the homestead. We have the model motel, which I personally know, from my experience in my job. Department of Public Aid put people up there that are homeless. You can go by there anytime. That's theirs. That's two already. We have Section 8 houses. In a four-block area, I think we have most of this type of thing instead of anyplace else in town. I feel that there are other buildings, other options, and if the city council doesn't want them at St. Paul's, why would I want them across the street from me? Thank you.
Thank you. Alden Marzett. Marian Foy. Foy. F-O-Y. Jill Sharp. Okay.
Hi, my name is Jill Shepkowski. I used to be the Community Outreach Director at River Valley Christian Fellowship, which hosted Thursday nights for the Fortitude Shelter. And I'm now a teacher at Kankakee High School, and I do own a home in Kankakee as well. I'd like to just go over with you some things tonight that I noticed in my time volunteering with Fortitude Community Outreach. Some things that I got to be a part of at Fortitude included giving a short Bible devotional to the group and then talking with guests afterwards about God and their relationship to Him. One fall, we hosted a church service and lunch for the homeless in downtown Kankakee at the Depot. I'll never forget seeing some of the guests seated at that service with their hands raised as they were singing their hearts out to God. When the bus stop was eliminated right outside of River Valley, we started a shuttle from downtown Kankakee to our church, so that the guests didn't have to walk the long distance from Armor Road in the freezing weather to our building. I drove that bus on Thursday night sometimes. Never once, not once, was I afraid for my safety. Whether I was in the bus with five or six men or only one of them, I was never concerned about what these people were going to do. We had great conversations. We listened to music. They told me what was going on in their lives, and I was never worried. We're so grateful to each of you on this board, grateful that you choose to serve your community in this way, grateful that you care about the issues in Kankakee. I just want to remind you that you're here to care for each and every resident of Kankakee. That includes the people who live by the church on Fourth Avenue, and it includes the men and women who would be sheltered there. I understand and empathize with people who are worried about the safety of their neighborhood, but these are people who likely have never served at Fortitude and don't know the guests who stay there. The church where I served is located in a quiet and lovely neighborhood in Bradley, and we never had any issues with our neighbors, and neither did the guests of Fortitude. Those are facts. Conjecture, fear, and classism must not be allowed to dictate your decision. Hypothetical situations don't have a place here. What we know is that we have residents of our community, people who belong here, that need shelter so that they don't freeze this winter. They need shelter so that they have an address to give on job applications. They need shelter so that they can take a shower and get a clean set of clothes to be ready for the job that they get. And they need the community that is Fortitude that will come around them with furniture and other needs when eventually they're able to move into their own home, which is the goal for every guest at Fortitude. The fact that Dawn has had to stand here, year after year, for reason after reason, begging you to allow her to serve the homeless, begging you to allow her to care for these people who quite literally could die if someone wasn't there to take care of them, is unfathomable. The fact that there are citizens of this city that you turn a blind eye to and create a struggle for because a few people might be nervous about things that haven't even happened isn't logical or fair. Are we dealing in fact or fear? The facts, as I see them, are that Dawn and Fortitude are ready and waiting to serve our community, someone that no one else is standing up to do. All they need is the space to do it in. She doesn't even need your help. She just needs you to recognize that fear is not fact and prejudice is not a reason to discriminate. As I mentioned, I am a teacher at the high school. My students have been homeless themselves. They're compassionate people, something that I wish would run off on others in this room. Property taxes? What has happened to compassion, to kindness, and to humanity? When we're more concerned with dog houses than housing humans, something is broken. Leadership is hard. It takes guts. It takes resolve and dedication to doing the right thing. Anyone can sway the influences of the loud voices. It takes a true leader to listen to those small voices, to hear the people who don't get to be heard, and to fight for them, to know that your decision might not be cheered by the influencers, and you might not even meet the people that you helped. But you'll know that your spot on this council is well-deserved and well-earned because you chose to listen to the facts and not give in to fear mongering and prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Benoit.
Hi, my name is Judy Benoit, and I reside at 1720 South Fifth Avenue. I'm not against Fortitude for any sort of reason. I just feel that the location is not best fitted. I believe that there are other places that need to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Petrucci. Mike?
Good evening. My name is Mike Petrucci. I live at 1222 South Third Avenue. And one thing I'm wondering is, when these people get turned loose at 7:00 a.m., where are they going? I know in the wintertime where they're going. They're going somewhere where they think they can get warm. I worked as a paramedic for 20 years. More than once, I got called to somebody's garage because they found somebody frozen like a pork roast laying in their garage. It's not a pretty sight when a feral cat's been chewing on them. I'm not... I have nothing against Fortitude. I'm just against the location. You can't look me in the eye and tell me my property values are not going to drop because of this. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Lakeisha. Lakeisha. If you could come forward and speak in the mic.
Picture the story that if you see that your father worked hard and hard and hard to leave something to his two daughters. My daughter has great knowledge of why this house is where it is. I live at 1259 South Third. When I turn around, I'm looking directly at the church. I got to think about what my dad went through before he died to leave that property to me and my daughter and my sister. It is our family history now. So I feel like it's a disappointment. I'm not also helping the homeless, because we help too. I'm not opposed that they need a place to stay. I'm not opposed that they need shelter. I'm not opposed of the fear, because you shake the fear every day, because we walk every day, don't know what's going to be the unknown. It's not the fear of that. It's the fear that people have worked hard to have something to give to their children. So this house will be passed to my daughter, that I'm teaching her something to have in the family. So when I look in the backyard, I got to think about not myself anymore. I got to think of my 12-year-old daughter, who's a female, and I don't know everybody. Let's be realistic, you don't know everybody. I'm not opposing to the homeless, because I know they need help. But I think of, this is going to be left to my daughter, something my dad worked... He didn't have the two dollars when he came to Chicago and worked his ass off, excuse my French, but he did, 30 years, to leave us something. I want to keep this house in my neighborhood. Yeah, I like my neighborhood. I'm not opposing to the homeless. I'm not opposing to what Dawn is doing. But when I look in my backyard, I look directly at the church. I love people too, but what if? I'm not saying there's a fear, but people worked hard to keep their property. He worked hard to have something to leave in the Rivers family, and I want to keep my house. That's it.
Thank you. Do you want to wait still, Lance? Or we could have... You want to go ahead and do communication?
Yes, so in terms of communication, we did receive several calls and emails on this case, and I guess for the record, I will go ahead and read those under the record so that you hear those comments. I received an email from Russell Lovett. I am... He's at 1294 West Walnut in Kankakee. He says, "I am in support of Fortitude's plan to purchase the church in the Fourth Ward in Kankakee to develop into a housing facility for the homeless in Kankakee which Fortitude serves." Jesse Bridges, a Fourth Ward resident, emailed and wrote, "My name is Jesse Bridges, and I'm a Fourth Ward resident of one year and lived in the Fifth Ward three years before that and have been a lifelong county resident. I have three children, ages 10 months, 12 and 16 years old. My wife Kara teaches in Kankakee in District 111 at LCC. We support Fortitude being approved for the South Fourth Avenue location. Fortitude is very attentive to the finer details of why and how homeless people are in our community and neighborhoods and what they need to find permanent dwelling. I live in the Fourth Ward and know their site is near troubled blocks. I know that they will only improve the area with the dedication and service. They have provided an Emmanuel Baptist that they work well with Fourth Ward concerns. I have done some volunteering for Fortitude, and they really need a central location to make it smoother for volunteers to plug in and to meet the homeless folks' needs. I volunteered for the Salvation Army at least monthly when I was a student at Olivet 18 years ago, and I had multiple friends who worked in their shelter. Salvation Army had a much different approach, a big and personal stand-in-line program, even though they offered much personal time and care. It was clearly a problem then, and it seems to have led to their shelter closing. Fortitude makes homeless shelters truly personal and attentive while still offering every person in need an equal set of resources and support. They have worked with dozens of churches, businesses, and city departments, and have been jumping through hoops like champions for five years, and raised serious funds and have momentum to make our ward better. I think this is just the perfect challenge and resource that our city and ward needs. It is the perfect location for Kankakee High School students to fulfill their mandatory volunteering hours. I know there are a lot of concerns about the health of the surrounding blocks, but having this church sit empty and still having no fully functioning shelter in the metro area for another year wouldn't improve that area in the least. I was not able to make it to the McBroom Park meeting but watched it on Facebook and was impressed with what they had to say. They are sharp and acknowledged and addressed the very real concerns presented at the meeting from residents. The concerns from city council are rather vague and flat. I heard the whole runaround over the St. Paul site. This time around, I have only heard the journal's quotes from Alderman Swanson and Marzac, and they were inaccurate in them. I am curious if there are... Sorry, how about most of them? They were inaccurate. I am curious if there are more specific and deep concerns. Where would I find out about them? I know it's a challenge and frustrating to provide ward leadership, but simply generally opposing a shelter is not leadership. Fortitude taking the lead, and I thank Fortitude for taking the lead and would recommend you follow it. Tom Martin, 1236 South Fourth, called and said, "The existing neighborhood is quiet and primarily a single-family. He is opposed to the request and feels a shelter would be a horrible neighbor. He feels it would have a negative impact on property values and is concerned about the uncontrolled nature of Fortitude's operation with guests leaving the building early each day and having nowhere to go until the evening. He's also concerned that they will wander the neighborhood." Sarah Neils, Community Service Director, Kankakee Iroquois and Ford County Catholic Charities Diocese of Joliet, says that she is in full support of the proposed request for conditional use permits as requested and the rezoning at 1284 South Fourth Avenue. Fortitude has proven themselves time and again in the community. They are providing a critical service in the community for the most vulnerable, the homeless. The proposed location is very good. Fortitude has met every barrier the city council has made with regard to sheltering people. The city council has clearly not desired to have this shelter in the downtown area. They have found an alternative location that has addressed the concerns and provided the structure that they need. There are no other homeless shelters in the county. This is a critical need for the community. We must have a shelter. Matthew and Joshua Heading Hess wrote, they are Fourth Ward residents. "Good morning. I'm writing to urge the planning committee to support Fortitude's community outreach in their pursuit to utilize the property on South Fourth Avenue to shelter the homeless. Fortitude has proven itself to provide a competent and necessary service to our community for the past four years. As a mental health provider in the community, a resident in the Fourth Ward, and just down the street from this property, I will be proud to have this organization in my immediate community, taking care of our most vulnerable." Brianna Gifford, also a Fourth Ward resident, wrote, "As a resident of West Kankakee, I fully endorse the Fortitude shelter placement and am a big supporter in everything that they do. We have a wonderful little neighborhood over here, and if we can't help our fellow neighbors back on their feet, then we need to readjust our priorities." And I received another one today that I didn't get a chance to put on my list. One second. Oh, maybe I got it. Okay, I guess I do have all of them. That's all that we received by phone and email.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for or against the case? You come forward and state your name.
My name is Angel Myers-Martin. I live...
My name is Angel Myers Martin. I live on the corner of 3rd and Jeffrey at 1281 South 3rd Avenue. I appreciate the fact that Fortitude wants a church, that they work with churches, that they are Christian-oriented and everything else like that. But that does not take away that we already have homeless people that live over there. We have a girl that's 17 years old. She's probably 18 now. She's a whore. And I say it just like that because that's what she has to do, to go live at the Motto Motel, which is just one house away and three houses over. If you go across the street, three houses over, across the alley, that's where it's at. Fortitude is across my backyard, across the alley, right there if they get the church. Oh, Motto Motel's over here. No tell. Has drugs, has whores, has people staying there from all over the world, everything. And they always have problems. The cops are called there. It's a normal thing. It has toned down. But there was a time there when I know my kid had blackout windows at his house because there was always lights over there. And they weren't from the building. They were from police cars and stuff. I see everybody, when the church over there was having people that were homeless, are needing food and stuff, you know, my girlfriends and stuff would need food, and I would also go over there because I was also needing food. Okay? So I went over there. And we liked the people. We got along with them fine, no problems. Yeah, there's been thefts in our neighborhood. There's also been three murders. One was done by kids. One, don't even know how the guy got stabbed. And one got shot in the alley. And they were all within distance of my house, one block. One block. And the church sits in my backyard. Now you guys want to take and put some good Christian thing there with the homeless people. We got whores running around. We got people that come and steal. And I mean steal. Steal stuff that people have worked their lives for. There was one, one people that were stealing over there. When they finally caught them, they found out that they had stolen a brooch from a lady. And the brooch had all her kids' birthstones in there. Why? Why? You tell me that, you know, these very nice people over here that want Fortitude, they say, "Oh, well, they're not this or that or this or that." But I know five of them that they've helped. And they were all crackheads. And I'm not being mean or nasty or anything because I know it. Because I used to be a bartender in this town and I used to serve these people. I know more secrets about these people than what people think I do. I know a lot of the homeless people because I slept underneath the bridge myself and nobody was there to help me. I understand it. But I don't want it in my backyard. I don't want to look out there and see somebody. There's other places in this building, there's other buildings in this town that are not getting utilized, that are going to have to be torn down because nobody wants to rent them out or fix them up or anything. Why? It's crazy. It just is. And I don't know what else to say. It's, for me, it's not a matter of property values or anything. It's a matter of, I look out my door and I see the little Mexican kids from across the street out at 11, 12 o'clock at night running around. I gotta go outside and act like a banshee woman with cops running around flying up and down our street and everything to get them to say, "Hey, get those kids in the house." Because they're too busy going to get in the criminals all around the house. Just a block and a half down from us, we just had a dingbat taken, go up over our forward and fall over on our side. Hello. And that's up and down our street. You know? You're adding, I can understand adding more people and adding more things. But it's not a good area. I mean, it's a nice area. We love it. But it's not, it's not for Fortitude. There's other places. There's even places where DHS has been that they could go. There's other big buildings. There's buildings that have better access. This building here has a tunnel in it. Are they going to close the tunnel that goes from the house to the church to make sure that nobody gets hurt in that tunnel? Oh, how do I know? Because I knew the Langhoses that lived there when I was a little girl. I knew the Rowalts that lived there when I was a teenager. I've known all the people that have been back there in that house because they were our friends. And the fathers were the preachers of the church. And they were nice people. But there's a tunnel in there. What are they going to do with it? How are they going to put showers in it? It's a poured basement. How are they going to take the church part upstairs and make it into rooms? They only have a small house, a house smaller than mine. How are they going to house 18 people? I have three bedrooms. I could put bunk beds in them. And I could put people in my house and I can have them all come over. Think my neighbors would like it? I don't think so. I think they'd get pretty mad at me and tell me off and tell me to get lost. That's what you're doing. You're putting a whole bunch of bunk beds and everything in a place. You don't have enough shower room. You only have one shower for that whole entire space. One, right now. And you guys have 18 people and you're going to move in there? I want to see that shower ritual. Am I done?
You can wrap it up.
That's, I guess.
Okay, I'll take one more, which I see a hand in the back.
Hi, my name's Lori Pope and I've been a volunteer at Fortitude this past year. It's been one of the most rewarding things in my life. And when Dawn mentioned the church at 4th and Jeffrey, I thought, "It's perfect." And I think it's perfect because it is a residential area. Because the homeless aren't going to stay there. They're going to get up in the morning and leave and take that bus and get out of the area. There is nothing there for them that they want. They're going to come, they want the shelter. The only reason they're going to come is for shelter and food. They're not coming to cause trouble. They don't want to mess it up. They want, come, have shelter, food, stay overnight and leave in the morning. Even if they don't have jobs, they don't want to stay there. There's nothing there for them. And also, maybe we should close down that hotel, open up Fortitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson? If you would like a final comment?
Yeah, there were some specific questions I think you could probably address, but, yeah, Lance, go ahead.
I didn't prepare an official speech or anything, but I wanted to listen. And thank you for allowing me to listen till the end because I think that's what you have to do. Before I was an alderman, I've fought fights with the city. I've come up with solutions that would work. Some wouldn't listen, some would. It's no different than this. I hear talk about needs. I don't think anybody questions there's a need for this. When I talked to Dawn, when she called me, she talked about, you know, not being able to do another year at the facility that they're at. I said, "Due to extenuating circumstances, I wouldn't see that that couldn't possibly be a possibility." And then she brought up this location. She said, "We gave our word that we would not seek another year at that location." So she brought up the church here. And what I said was, "You know how it works. You come down and you present your case at planning. And pretty much if there's no opposition, they recommend it and it goes upstairs and it gets voted on. If there's opposition, it may or may not go upstairs." But I said, "If I were you, I would go around to the neighboring houses and get an opinion," as I was going to do. And I did. And I went and I knocked on doors. And I believe the people that are impacted are the immediate area, directly around the blocks around the church. It's a need. I had no problem with Fortitude. I think they're doing a wonderful, they're providing a wonderful service. But where does that need and service end? I mean, I listen to a lot of people for and against it. In the time we spent here, we could have probably sat down and we could have probably looked and discussed multiple locations that would be better served. And you got to look at, who's impacted? Who do you value? Do you value the residents that are around it, that are against it, that are speaking out against it? The only scenario that I could come up with was, you know, if somebody moves next door to an airport and then they complain about airplanes. Then you got another scenario where people live in an area and somebody wants to build an airport. They have every right to complain that somebody's going to affect where they're living. I think, I'm a little disappointed to hear that if this does not go through, that there is no Plan B. Because I don't think anybody on this board, on the City of Cankey, in this room wants to see anybody on the street in our winters that are actually getting worse, you know? So I would think that, I would hope, whatever happens down here, whether it goes upstairs, you know, well, upstairs, if it comes back to City Council, I would hope that something could be brought forth, whether that be, you know, another building that possibly you guys could stay in one central location, at least make it through this winter. My biggest thing is, you've been approved for the site already over behind CBS. And I don't recall, I could be wrong, but I don't recall this sort of opposition to that location. In which it was approved, City Council approved it. City Council, you know, actually gave Fortitude some money for ARPA. I just, just tonight, I had dinner with a couple. And I mean, I, you know, it's not my job to find somebody else a location. But I look at, well, if it don't work here and the people around it are against it, where do you look? I looked at the medical building that's across from Riverside Hospital. It's in disrepair. But there's a nursing home next to it. There's residential. It don't fit, right? I looked at Shapiro. I fly over there and I look at these wonderful buildings that are not being used. They're amazing buildings, stone buildings over in Shapiro. Could something be worked out with the state? I don't know. But those are questions that we should be having instead of, you know, "We got to win, we got to win." It's about solutions and I think if we actually sit down and talk, I've heard crime tonight. I've heard a few things tonight that I would hope that somebody would pick up the phone, because my phone's on all the time, and call me and it can be addressed. That's the biggest problem. We have a community. I went to the McBroom meeting that she had and I did not see one work. It's her meeting. I wanted to listen to what was being said there to make a position. People, we have a community. We have a good community. And that includes the homeless. They're part of the community. It's a countywide problem. I understand that they don't want to go to, you know, Urban A where maybe the people aren't served. But people, we talk about busing. They could go there too. But let's focus back on Cankey Key. Cankey Key, obviously, there's a need. And where's the solution? So back to another building. At dinner, somebody brought up a building that I didn't even consider. One thing about real estate, I'd be glad to share, which I actually shared with him tonight, the location. But once you bring that out, even though it's been vacant, it kind of drives the value up. They know something's interested. But I know another building that I believe would fit the needs of the organization. I'm totally willing to sit down and let's brainstorm. But based on the petitions, based on the location, I've lived in the 4th Ward, the south side, my whole life. You have, Mr. Enz, he brought up, you know, there's an eight-unit building that Tom Martin, eight-unit just to the north of it. There's a 12-unit just to the north of it. You have the group home that's just to the north of that. You got a three-unit to the west. You got a two-unit. Mixed in with all the residential. Whether it's popular or not, doing the right thing, I believe, you guys don't get paid to do this. So. And somebody said about political, these people don't care about politics because we've been on both sides. They send something up, they vote it down. You know, I mean, they're doing their job based on what they have here. So I'm going to get off the soapbox here, but I just, based on the amount of people and the amount of, you know, petitions that are there, and it was from the 4th Ward, you know? Danita, my seatmate, she's in Springfield. She's going to be here. She is opposed to it. I got to recommend against it. But you guys are the final say. And then it goes up to City Council. I would just hope that this winter, as a community, we could find a suitable place where this could give it a little buffer. The biggest thing is, they were approved for the site. They got their land. They got your approval. They got City Council approval. They got funding. The biggest problem, why we're here, is because the price of materials increased to a point they can't afford it. Sheet applied was $23. It went to $86. It's down to $56. It's trending down. A year from now, will it be back to where, to $23? I don't know, but it's trending, it's trending back down. My hope would be we could find a suitable, even if it's temporary, location and give that time and maybe, just maybe, they could build their building where everything is approved. That's, you know, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson?
Well, it's a difficult situation. And I guess what I would put forth is, these kinds of decisions need to be made upon the facts that are available. Not upon emotion, not upon unfounded conditions that have questionable data. Not upon emotion, not upon unfounded conditions that have questionable data. And it would be a sad situation if a decision was made without looking at the clarity of the evidence that exists. You know, I come, I'm an engineer, right? Every decision that we make is based on facts. If we make a decision based on emotion, we're looking to get in big trouble. And I think that has to be how you look at these things, look at the data, look at the facts, look at the history, look at what Fortitude has done in the past, and the types of folks that are being served here, and the results, before you express an opinion. And once you do that, I think then it'd be very clear.
Mr. Tyson, there was a couple specific questions that came out that I think you could probably answer to clear up for people. So one of the questions was, "How are you gonna put in showers and that kind of thing?" Which I've already seen a floor plan, but you might wanna describe that for people.
Well, and Chip accused himself here, which I appreciate, but he's already laid it out, we went through it. So what we did, you know, Justin Gozen back here is, I don't know what I'd do without that guy, he's helped in a very difficult season. Chip, Dan Ruder from Ruder Electric, Jake Cook from Glady, a fellow from Matco that Justin brought in. So we all went over together, and we went through this building. And the reason we did that together is to make sure that all of our ideas were in collaboration, and that we looked at the challenges, and were able to decide on a solution as we stood there, then drawn by Chip. To do ADA compliance, to do zone approval for fire suppression, to look at the structure, to look at, so for instance, I'll give you a good example. Here's what you don't wanna run into. So Mr. Marzak mentioned the Riverside building. Justin and others, we went through the Riverside building and looked at, because we thought, "Well, it's not in a great location, difficult maybe for the guests to get to, maybe we can figure something out." We went through that facility, and just looking at the asbestos mitigation would have been enough to put us over budget before we even got to really restructuring the facility. And I went through the facility, and as an engineer, at least I'm able to do some things, looking at the structure, there's no way. So I'm not saying that there aren't possible buildings somewhere in this area that would fit our requirements. I'm sure that there probably is somewhere, but we've kicked this can down the road a long time. A long time. And now we put people that we serve in jeopardy, and that has to come to an end, with a good solid decision based on facts.
Thank you. May I ask a question, please? Deb Terrell? Actually, I have three questions.
Okay. Hope I got three answers.
Who owns the land of the site behind CBS, where you were going to build?
That was donated to us.
So you do still own the land?
Yeah, we were very happy about that.
My second question is, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Please, that's all right.
Somebody asked about liability insurance, and I thought that was an intriguing question. Does Fortitude carry any liability insurance to protect the people around you?
Now, I'd have to defer that to one of the Fortitude folks, but, yeah, Marty? Not at this time. But we have, but we did look. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. No, yeah, the facility's definitely, yeah, the facility's covered. But we, you know, there's not, I don't exactly what you mean, then.
Well, if there was an incident of vandalism or something like that, would you have liability insurance to cover it? If my neighbor's tree falls on my house, he has to pay for the damages. So I'm saying that the person who was asking seemed to be asking, if I, you know, understood them correctly, if somebody does vandalize their property or do something, does Fortitude cover that cost?
That, I don't understand how that would work.
The same way homeowners' insurance works.
No.
If a neighbor's tree falls on my house...
Yeah, but that's a, well, I'm sorry, but that's a completely different thing when the tree falls on your house, because the tree is coming from his property onto yours. That's not a person, that's not part of the property. That's a different issue.
All right.
So, but, I'm gonna make a comment here. Again, we need to look at the facts of the types of people that Fortitude serves, and the history and the record. If you'd like to talk to Bob Bowman personally about our experience at St. Paul's, I invite you to do that, please. It's better than listening to me, I'm sure.
You say that Fortitude turns away people who are registered sex offenders, or, I've spoken with, I too serve the homeless, and I've spoken to a number of people downtown that have been turned away from Fortitude. When they're turned away, where do they go?
Well, and so, thank you, that's a good question. So here's what we can't do, okay? The duty of Fortitude is to ensure the safety of the guests within that facility. We can't police the county. That's not Fortitude. Talk to somebody else about that. What we can do, though, we have women and children and vulnerable guests. We're not going to introduce someone who has the ability to damage that situation. We're just not gonna do that. Now, the police have brought people to us, and we certainly respect that situation. But one of the things we were doing in the design of the new building, and we've also gone through it in this facility, is a place for the police to bring someone who isn't necessarily an offender, but they're not sure about it. And that person will be in isolation until there can be credible understanding of that person's history. So that's the best, and we only, we are doing that to try to help what the police department faces as well about people. It's not an easy thing, but we're not gonna bring them into the building and put guests that are vulnerable exposed to that situation without checking that database and going through that history. That's what I say about pads, that came from the pads model, that's the way people do it from around the world, they have a system by which they check these things so that the guests are safe. That's priority.
Thank you. Conditioners, any other questions?
My name is Arthur Wise. Is there any way, is there gonna be a lot of cost to have patients?
Well...
And then this practice board came, and then, so we can do this for a year, a temporary for a year, including, and have what else on the glove and details. And then, if there's, I know that we have red building down the corner, that's had a year, shows itself, okay? And then, after that, they came in here for, give the right to stay there longer, just a little longer. If there's any time that you can agree with, that would be temporary. But, I'm asking for, yes, it would be temporary, but, we're talking about renovating the place to some degree.
So, I mean, too much. So, I can tell you right now, so as a, for instance, the basic plumbing elements here, to get this thing into gear, and so we need to, for instance, engineering guy, we're gonna need to run like a four-inch main out to the main in the street for the fire suppression system. That's, you know, by the time you do that plumbing, you're talking about $90,000 is a rough guess. But the difference is, is that we can afford to do the renovations that we need to get to ADA, fire, et cetera. And we have a nice plan that has been designed in the sanctuary area as a first phase that does give the showers expansion for ADA access and things like that. That is a Phase 1 issue. And that's what's planned. That's, so that's why we're in a hurry to get this done, because otherwise, I'm gonna have to get my hammer and be there myself, which probably scares a number of the guys here, so. Okay, yep.
Gary McCracken, can I, just one question. There was something brought up about a tunnel between the bill...
Right, there is.
Can you address that?
Yeah, it's, so between the residence and the sanctuary and the church in the basement, that there is a tunnel there. We have no fear of that. We have, so if you look at how we are, we train the people that are on-site, they monitor the condition all night long. So we're not worried about a tunnel there. And at the other end, in the residential area, eventually that will be the office for Fortitude and storage. So that tunnel doesn't bother us at all, we're not gonna shut it off, that's for sure, because it gives us easy access from the housing unit over to the facility where we intend to have the guests. So we're not, we're not using that tunnel to put guests back and forth, that's not it at all. No.
Tunnel will be kept open?
Yeah, it'll be kept open, because we can still use it, though there's things down there right off of that tunnel, HVAC and MEP systems right off of that tunnel that we gotta maintain. And we don't wanna, you can't do that, in other words. Access to those things is right off that tunnel. And storage too, by the way, which we need. That help?
I have one other question from Mr. Robinson.
What's the logic behind not having a Plan B?
I wish there was. So there is no logic, there is no, there's no acceptable path where we can serve these guests. So we have an agreement with the city on St. Paul's, that agreement was based on us being able to complete the facility on Washington. Circumstances beyond our control put that in jeopardy. We tried, again, we tried two different things. Redesign, to get the costs down, and asking the city for AARP funds to try to bridge whatever gap resulted. Neither one of those played out to a point where our finances could succeed. And I'll be very frank, well, anyway, that did not work out. So now, at the combined purchase price of this property and what we're looking at at renovations, we already have funding secured for this. We have a good capital campaign that's been successful, we have some financing available to us, and we're not, you know, we are trying to be as self-sufficient as we can.
All right, let me just add one last question. So if, just suppose this does not work out, if the city was to offer you an extension of one year, would that be something feasible?
Well, if they offered us, so, I have to tell, I have to say this, we wanna serve these guests, and we're gonna try to do it any possible way we can to get to a permanent shelter site for the future. And we always talked about the release of these folks in the morning and things of that nature. We wanna get today services here, so that they're not, as they wake up in the morning, there's also things that they're going to have access to for services to, again, move them towards being self-sustaining folks in the community. So just wanna make sure that was clear, because that didn't come out very often. But, yes, that would be one way to get there, but we still need to move forward with the permanent facility. But, but again, you know, the integrity of Fortitude, the Board of Directors, the Director, we honor our agreements, and with the city, we agreed not to go forward with St. Paul's. So we haven't even asked St. Paul's to do anything. They've been a great partner, they've been fantastic. But we have not asked them that question, because we have an agreement that says we can't. Okay? Too many words, sorry.
Deb, do you have another question? No, no, but I'm ready to act if there are no others.
All right, we'll go ahead and pause the public hearing session. Thank you. Hey, conditioners, are you ready to act?
Madam Chairman, in the case of PB 202272, the request by Fortitude Community Outreach for rezoning of the property from R1 to C1 at 1288 South Worth Avenue. I'd like to preface the motion that I'm about to make. I'm saying this because I'm not sure that everyone here is aware of what we do on this board. We're basically a board of zoning appeals. City Council has more latitude than we do. We have to concern ourselves with land use and zoning, and to protect the city's interests that way. We operate as a recommending body to City Council. We are not the end of the road on this zoning issue. We have sets of standards that we have to consider when we get a request. There are very specific standards, there are different standards for each type of request, and there are parameters within where we have to work. This request for us is about a map amendment, changing the city's map. We're not here to deny services to the marginalized. It has been the tradition of this board to do just the opposite. And in recent memory, we have approved all of Fortitude's requests, this body has. We have, we've supported a home for troubled youth, we've supported a home for homeless veterans, we've supported three group homes, we have supported two rehab shelters. It's been our tradition to try to be of service to the marginalized in the community. But we're here to consider a proposed change to the city's map and to the neighborhood that has quite an impact. We look at density of services, we look at the intensity of the zoning change that's requested, and in this case, it's a big ask. So we look at our findings, we look at the parameters within which we have to work. And they are as follows. A, the proposed map amendment must be consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of our ordinance, which is promoting and protecting the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and general welfare of the city, securing adequate natural light, pure air, and/or safety from fire and other dangers, conserving the taxable value of land, and generally enhancing the aesthetic values throughout the city. In this case, taxable land would not be conserved, taxable land value may be impacted by the rezoning of this property to commercial in a residential neighborhood. B, the proposed map amendment has to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's official comprehensive plan, and in general conformity with the land use recommendations specified by said plan. While a portion of the property is currently being used institutionally, the more intense rezoning to commercial use and the use of residents as an office space would not be in keeping with the conformity of the surrounding land use. C, deals with the compatibility with existing uses and the zoning classification of property within the general area of the subject property. The existing uses are R1, and a change to a commercial zoning in a residential neighborhood is not compatible. Cankey has an excess of vacant commercial property, so there is no demonstrable need for adding another commercial lot or space. D, compatibility with existing uses and the zoning classification of property within the general area of the subject property. If rezoned commercial, this property would be incompatible with most commercial uses when vacated or if vacated by Fortitude. In other words, it's still gonna be commercial whether they're there or not. E, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the subject property. This area is not trending commercial, and if it were, there's plenty of available commercial space along Jeffrey. Therefore, I am proposing that we advise City Council to deny the application.
Second.
Any questions or comments? So, to be clear, a yes is to deny rezoning from R1 to C1. Ready for roll call?
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks. Jessica Andrade.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Brajas.
Yes.
Chip Rumabstains, Beverly Hood.
No.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, yes, two, no, one abstention. So, that's recommended for denial.
You could always go before City Council.
Well, for this, it goes pretty much automatically. Yeah.
So, is denying.
I suppose you should still proceed on the conditional use. I mean, technically, if you don't grant the zoning, they can't get the conditional use. But, in the chance that the City Council overturns your vote, they may still want your opinion on the conditional use.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, it's basically implied, right? Because if they didn't grant the zoning, the other's not approved. Okay. Understand.
So, that concludes our public hearing.
So, for everybody's benefit, the minutes will be prepared from this meeting, I'll write up some findings of fact based upon Deb's comments there, and then this will go to the City Council at a future meeting, probably the first meeting in September, but we'll have to verify that with the mayor.
Other business?
I think that's probably enough for one night.
Motion to adjourn?
I saw a move.
Your second? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.